Welcome to the Cochise County Board of Supervisors District Two candidate's forum. That's a mouthful. As you know, it's been put on by premier alliances and we are assisted by the League of Women Voters of Greater Tucson. I'm Barbara Becker, your moderator for this evening's event. I do not live nor do I vote in Cochise County, so I'm here as a totally neutral party. Assisting me this evening from the League of Women Voters of Greater Tucson is our timekeeper, Sherri Springer, and she will see her way with the signs. And one of the question sorters is Sue DeArman. John Spring Charlie is going to help along with Derek Jordan, Hillary Gardner, and RB Sue?
RB Sue.
Okay, well, I knew I'd screw up that one. It won't be the last of the evening. When you sat down, you noticed you had a pencil and a three by five card. If you have a question or questions, you can do multiple on those cards, write them down, then raise your hand, and somebody will pick up the card so that we can bring it to the sorters. We have question sorters because some of you will have the exact same question. It may not be asked the same way, but it will give the same question. So we want to make sure that we don't repeat the same thing over and over, that we get to as many good questions that are coming our way as we possibly can. Now, there are three candidates with us tonight for the District Two seat. We don't have all night to question them as much as we'd like to, so we will be limited on the number of questions that are formally asked, and I'm going to apologize upfront if we don't get to your question. I do need to explain a few things about our process. The candidates have already agreed to abide by our rules, and we ask the same of the audience. First, I want you to mute your cell phone and put them away. Do not record a video or pictures of this forum. It will all be online for you at the League of Women Voters Greater Tucson. What is the page?
Facebook.
Facebook.
Facebook.com/LWVGreaterTucson.
Okay, LWV Greater Tucson. Second, you'll notice that Ms. Springer is holding up signs that say 30 seconds, 15 seconds and stop. They're telling the speaker how much time they have left. Should the candidate continue to speak after the stop time's in place, I'm going to interrupt them and stop them. And we do that because we want everyone to have the same opportunities as the other candidates. So we want to ensure that everyone gets to talk uninterrupted for their full time frame. The third, the candidates will have two minutes to introduce themselves and tell us why they're running for office, and a minute and a half or 90 seconds to respond to each question. We're going to rotate the questions so who goes first, so everybody gets to be the first and the last if we all want to do it. Candidates have to remain in their seats, and they are not allowed to get up and walk around the room. Last, and very important, because this is really your role, we don't want any noise from the audience. We will all do that at the end of the forum. Don't applaud, don't boo, don't hiss, don't make any of those sounds. You can do it if they're ready.
No squirt bubbles.
That way, everybody gets a full 90 seconds, and they aren't interrupted by the audience. So without further ado, let us begin the forum by each candidate having two minutes to tell us about themselves and why they're running for office. Here's Mitch Lindeman, Joni Jacomino.
Jacomino.
Okay, Jacomino. Oh, see, I told you. And Kathleen Gomez. And so we'll start with Mitch, and we'll go down the line.
Good evening, and thank you very much for this opportunity to have a candidate forum, and thank you for being here. Welcome, everyone. I'm Mitch Lindeman. I've been a 36-year resident of Cochise County, 31-year retired teacher. I've been married 37 years, and I have three adult children. And a little bit about my education, I have a master's degree in elementary ed from NAU. You know, don't go on that one. I have a master's in educational administration from NAU also. I completed the Arizona School Superintendent's Internships in the year 2000. That dates me kind of. And you know, education has always been my focus, but I've also served the City of Douglas on the city council for 14 years in various capacities. I've been mayor pro temp or vice mayor three times. I've been the school board president and continuing to serve on the school board. It's my third term. I was on the planning and zoning commission as member, vice chair, and chairman for 11 years. And so I have a long history of government service. And why I'm running for supervisor position is that I feel that I can use my experience and broaden my scope of service. So in a nutshell, that's me. Thank you.
Kathleen Gomez.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. I am a fourth generation resident of Douglas, with my family having been here for over a century. My roots are in Pertiville, where my grandfather Mike Gomez owned Gomez Grocery and was also known as the mayor of Pertiville. Gomez Grocery is the community central hub. My father served as both the school board member and mayor of Douglas. I earned my degree in international service from American University in Washington, DC. During my time in DC, I worked for three congressional offices, including two congressmen from Texas and the ladies Tricia Schroeder from Colorado. While serving as Pat Schroeder's office services legislative aide, I wrote the Military Family Act of 1985. Under her supervision and with assistance of the Army, this act established an office in the Pentagon focused on family policy led by a four-star general and implemented provisions to support military families. After a decade in DC, I moved to New York City, where I worked for trade associations, nonprofits, and on Wall Street. I also ran a small business in New York City with my ex-husband. While raising my two children, Diego and Mateo, I became actively involved in smaller class sizes and against teaching to the test. I was elected to the school board in New York City and later hired as a director of New Yorkers for Smaller Class Sizes by the Hispanic Federation. In 2007, I returned to Douglas, and I worked at Southeast Arizona Medical Center, where I served as a lobbyist, community outreach coordinator, and marketer. I was president of the Douglas Rotary Club and the chairman of commerce. I started the local farmer's market with the backing of the hospital. I recently stepped down to run for supervisor, and I stepped down for a company I co-founded with my sons called Know Your Vote Initiative. This encourages voters to vote down the ballot for local, state, and county elections. You can find more information about me on my website, hivey.io/cathleen Gomez.
Thank you. Can y'all speak up a little more, because the mics aren't syncing us up as much as we want. Kathleen Jacomino.
Yep, Joni. Joni. Good evening. My name is Joni Jacomino. I was born and raised in Bisbee. I'm a third-generation Bisbee and Cochise County resident. I graduated from Bisbee High School in 1978, went on to ASU to get my Bachelor of Arts in secondary education. I have a Master of Arts in secondary education with a principal's certificate, as well as a Master of Science in Recreation, Sports, and Tourism with emphasis in sports management. I also have a Master's in Biology. My vast experience in different community modalities includes education, governance, recreation, nonprofit management, and volunteerism. These experiences give me a solid background to make a sound, informed decisions. I am a lifelong Democrat. I have lived in Cochise County for over 60 years and am currently the dean of students at Bisbee High School. I am a past Bisbee City Council member, Bisbee Unified School District Board member, and KBRP, the local radio station, board president. In addition to the regular duties of a city councilwoman, I served on the ad hoc committee to hire the city manager of Bisbee, served as council liaison for police and fire advisory committee, and was on youth council, civil service commission, and Evergreen Cemetery Committee. I was a juvenile corrections officer for the county. I was voted the second-best philanthropist in 2021 by the State of the South by the Herald Best of. For over 40 years, I've been an educator in the county and understand the demographics of our community. I have experience overseeing departments, supervising employees, grant writing, reporting, developing budgets, and designing program events. I currently serve on the boards for Bisbee, Kiwanis, and Friends of the Warren Ballpark. I was appointed to the Douglas AMA Groundwater Usage Advisory Committee by the governor. I'm a precinct committee person for the Democratic Party. I'm a volunteer DJ for KBRP Radio, Community Radio Station Bisbee. I also, and lastly, have a 24-year-old daughter, Tethlina, who now resides in Portland, Oregon.
Thank you. So we're going to start with Kathleen for the first question. What are the top three things you think you can accomplish for the ladies?
Well, number one, I believe that in my past, I've actually been actually very good at bringing people together who have different opinions to proceed with a certain goal. My experience in business, my experience in government, I worked for 10 years in Congress and also in New York City, I was very active. So throughout my whole career, I've been involved in community, in activists, in actually getting things accomplished. So I believe with my vast experience, I can really help Cochise County. This county has been, you know, a fortunate nation. My great-grandfather is buried in the only cemetery in America that's based in Mexico. I'm bilingual. I think that growing up in Douglas was the best of both worlds. And so I believe, having left Cochise County and understanding the incredible culture that we have and what we are, I want to keep that, but I want to make sure that we have growth and prosperity, that we can have jobs, so that our young people don't have to leave like I did when I was 17. So those are the types of things I think I can bring that's unique to the role of being on Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Joni. You bet. What are the top three things you think you can accomplish for the ladies?
I think that with all my experiences, I can accomplish bringing a variety of knowledge and experiences to the Board of Supervisors to help solve problems and to help bring together the other supervisors in a cohesive and collective work environment. One of the things that we've seen going on with the supervisors currently is it's really not a cohesive working group, and I think that is one of the things I would like to focus on first off. I feel that we need to address some of the changes that are going on in our community. I think we need to look at the different alternative lifestyles that are going on, like sustainable housing, the different types of transportation that are now coming down the pipe. We have things like the Sun Corridor that are going to be coming through, which is eventually going to connect Douglas all the way up to Vegas. So I think my experience with working with those organizations will also help. I also feel that the affordable housing issue is an issue that I would like to address. We have some problems here in the county, not just in Bisbee and not just in Douglas. And I have had some experience working with other people and talking with them on how to get funding and how to get the different NGOs to work together.
Thank you. And guess what? You get to start with the next question. Oh, Mitch, sorry. I didn't mean to leave you. Mitch, I'm leaving.
Thank you. I've served the City of Douglas on the Finance Committee Commission for 12 years. I'm serving currently. Mayor Huish has a degree in public service and administration, and he chose me to be the chairman of the Finance Committee. So I take a different take. I say, the thing that you look at is the budget. I think everything starts with the budget. I would encourage economic growth, and that way we can lessen the tax rate for new construction. You know, the port of entry is coming, we have to be prepared for that. I want to have the economic preparedness for this, and of course, the influx of people that will come with that. I know when I was vice mayor, I took the rest of the council out to San Luis, and we toured their new commercial port of entry at that time. San Luis was 5,000 people. Today, it's 35,000 people. So if that happens here, we best be prepared. And so that's where I think we should focus. What are we going to do with these? And the budget is a big part of that.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we'll start with Joni this time. Please tell us about your approach to the issue of the homeless population in Cochise County.
The homeless population in Cochise County is an issue, a problem. When I was on city council, I did have a place on the agenda to discuss one of our encampments, which is behind Safeway. We were talking about trying to bring in water stations and trying to bring in some of the healthcare so that people could receive services in their setting, so they wouldn't have to come out of it with uncomfortable situations. The homeless situation right now is growing, and it is causing a strain on cities, and it's causing a strain on some of the homeowners. I just heard from our mayor in Bisbee that Bisbee did receive a million dollars, and I was told it's going to be specifically for the homeless. So I'm hoping that they're going to work collectively with our NGOs, like Ten Town Homeless Shelter and Harm Reduction, that's also located here in Bisbee, that service those people. And hopefully, we will be able to provide them with more services and to help them connect with their families, because sometimes people don't even know their families are homeless. And that's one of the pushes I think that we really need to look at.
Thank you. Mitch?
Thank you. I think that it takes a city, or it takes a society, to solve society's problems. The first thing I would like to do is I would like to get a coalition of these faith communities, and we do that in Douglas already. We have the faith communities all coordinating. We can do a better job of that, and we can solve the homeless, but the basics is jobs. There are many people that are homeless because they don't have a job. And I think that, of course, with economic development, if we broaden that out and we transfer that to the jobs that are coming, you know, with the port of entry and everything, that I think is going to be one of the key factors that will help us solve that problem.
Kathleen?
We have 40 churches in Douglas alone, so I do think that that is a good way to approach it, to get all the faith communities together, to see how we can approach this stuff as a county instead of as a district or as different cities. Part of the issue too is drugs, of course. That causes a lot of homelessness. So I would like to make sure that we also bring stakeholders within the drug rehab, and those that do outreach to those who are, you know, addicted to drugs. The other thing too is I do have to, I agree, I think that the job situation is really serious. I mean, Douglas, we have an 11-cent sales tax. People are struggling just to pay for, you know, their rent. We have elderly communities that also are struggling between choices of rent and food. And so we have to pull together. I don't think it's just a District Two kind of question, it's a whole county question. And as a Board of Supervisors, we have to be very proactive and look at these issues and pull together, bring all the stakeholders together, so we have a comprehensive plan that actually can be effective and sustainable. Thank you.
Great. Okay, next question, and we'll start with Mitch. Please tell us about your approach to the issue of the, oh, wait, we've already done that. Respond to the status of your stance on groundwater depletion in Cochise County, in particular, the large agricultural usage of Riverview Dairy.
This is one of those problems that we face, but yet we don't have a lot of control. It's from the state, and I was just reading that in today's Star, that Governor Hobbs has a committee of things, and they're getting all this input from the legislature, but I don't think they have the real handle on the situation. The article today said that they were close, but then they did not totally agree, and then the legislature sin died. And so what we have to do is we can all, what we can do, now as far as Riverview, you can't just let one entity run them up. You know, all of the rest of us are here. Now, my feeling about corporate agriculture, I'm a farmer from North Dakota, not a corporate farmer, but each has a place. And if we have to, we have to regulate, and we have to come to some kind of an agreement for a balanced part. You have to have corporate farms to feed all of us. You have to have water for all of us. Now, I'm, there's not an easy answer, and you know, I don't have the answer, but we have to study that and come up. And yet again, it's not up to us, it's the state.
Thank you. Kathleen?
Well, Mark Twain once said whiskey is for drinking and water is for fighting. We all know throughout the world that water has been something that has always been fought over. You know, the AMA that was passed, the perception is that it restricts the local farmers who want to expand their irrigation opportunities. If they hadn't done it before the AMA was passed, they're not going to be able to. But meanwhile, Riverview has 600 wells that they can drill from, and that's on state records. I am opposed to Riverview. I mean, I went to the Wilcox meeting where Chris Mays was, and it's heartbreaking to hear how these people's wells have actually dried up. And this is not something that's just out in the rural community. We're looking at, Wilcox just had a well that dried up. We're looking at Douglas just had a possibly well dried up. The other big question, the other big issue that nobody talks about is Albieta. Albieta draws from 140,000 legal residents to include the outlandish residents of 300,000 people. They draw from the same water basin. If we don't get them to start talking about conservation, when they're, when the water, when they use the water, and they use a lot of it to actually, you know, water the streets because there's so many unpaved streets, and it causes dust. So their answer to that is to water the streets. Unless we don't talk with them and start conservation, it won't matter what we do on this side, because we have a population that's bigger than Cochise County drawing from that same water basin. Even though it's an international, foreign country, there's a lot of international agreements, and we can begin that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Joni?
Yes, I'm not in favor of Riverview. I have a friend that flies Electrolife, what we call lawnmower airplanes, and he's taken pictures of the settlements with all the paddles that are out there. Your average powl will trade probably, we're from Florida, it's 10 gallons of water a day, and they have over about 100,000 paddle out there. So that kind of gives you an idea of what they're using in just one encampment. They're trying to expand, they're buying spigots up, and the spigots are what's controlling the water. I am currently on the AMA for Douglas, and we are trying to get our legal verbiage in order. Eventually, there's going to be a tier system. One of the questions I ask is, are we going to be able to go back in and then decrease usage of the extremely large agricultural farms? And I was told yes. Riverview is drilling wells beyond belief. They're drilling 600, 800-plus feet deep. They're hitting what's known as geological water, and that's water you can't replace. Once that water leaves, there's no way for it to recharge. Wilcox is going to be in some higher straits, and not only with the agriculture, but with the mine that they're going to expand also. We need to definitely get some baseline data on water usage, and we need to start reining it in. And we need to put a stop on anything new until we can get our water under control.
Thank you. Okay, Kathleen, you're going to start with this one. You're going completely in a different direction.
Okay.
What do you see as the priority next steps for the county jail?
Okay, well, first of all, I believe, don't get me wrong, I believe that there should be a new jail, and I believe that that jail should stay in Bisbee. I know there's a lot of talk about it moving to Sierra Vista. I don't think this is a time to, with inflation and such, to be buying land in Sierra Vista to create a jail. I was a little bit not in favor of an all-male ballot for the jail tax and the fact that 10,000 people didn't get to vote. I do think that with the new revenue that is raised, I think right now, up to now, it's about $800,000, that should be put in a general fund, or a fund that we, as taxpayers, can see what is being used. Supposing if we want to understand, 8 million a year is going to be raised with this new tax, I'd like to see where that money goes to, who's going to be contracting out, when is it going to be built? And then at the end of it, when we build our jail, then can we repeal? I mean, I don't think we can, but what is that next 15 years or 10 years of use of the tax fund, what is that going to be used to? You know, once a tax is in place 25 years, we'll forget about it, and where is that money going to go to? I know with that extra 5 cents or whatever, actually in Douglas, we have the highest tax rate than anywhere else in this county. So I'd like to make sure that it's accountable, and we know what it's being used for.
Thank you. Joni?
I'm definitely for the jail staying in Bisbee. We do need a new jail. It is in a state of disrepair. I feel it would be a waste of money if we moved it anywhere. There was talk about moving it to Palominas, and that would mean putting in all new utility services. The county seat is Bisbee. Your court system is in Bisbee. And one of the things that people forget about are the people that live in Douglas that work at the jail. If they move the jail to Sierra Vista, that's going to add another half hour to 45 minutes of travel time. If they move it to Palominas, again, it's affecting people as well as the system itself. Since we are the county seat, we need to keep it as close together as possible. And I totally agree with what Kathleen said. We need accountability on that money. We have a lot of money that is being raised. It needs to be transparent. It needs to be tracked and documented what it's going for. And once we have reached that goal for what was originally asked for in that jail, then I agree, we need to do away with that tax, because that is one of the arguments I've heard in Wilcox. People are leaving Wilcox to go to New Mexico because the tax rate is so high, and it's affecting other councils.
Thank you. Mitch?
I had an opportunity to tour the jail probably last month, and it is old, antiquated, and the biggest problem is that there is no room for female offenders, there's no room for juvenile offenders. They're put in the mix, they're kind of separated. That can't be, and it's not humane. Now, I'm in favor of keeping the new jail in Bisbee, but we need it, and I'm glad that I supported the tax rate. You know, we have to pay for what we want, for what we need, and so it's as simple as that. But what happens right now is that the existing jail is the end of the budget, and so we're already paying for the jail services. Now, this extra money will go for building. Now, that's not going to go, it says on that for keeping the upkeep, you know, and the continuing, but that's not, that's in the new money in the new jail. Right now, there is budget for the existing jail that we're already paying for. So we're talking about the future, and I think that this is going to be bright. We're going to raise that money, we're going to have a new jail complex, and I think it will work out, and it should be in Bisbee.
Okay. This time, we're going to start with Joni, and the question is, how would you improve the relationship between the city and the county government?
Between the city and the county government?
A trick question.
I think there needs to be a lot more interaction with work sessions and with, between cities and the Board of Supervisors. City of Bisbee coming together with the different other towns, meeting and discussing the issues, the local issues that we have. They meet right now with the city of towns and government right now, but it's only about every three months. I think they need to meet monthly and discuss what issues are occurring so that the Board of Supervisors have a better idea. I think one of the problems that we have is that lack of communication, and the supervisors not actually getting the big picture of what's going on in the county. Bringing together all of the different towns at one time will give you a broader picture and help mend and build better relationships like that.
Great. Mitch?
Well, I always thought we worked well together, but there is a disjoint with the different government operations. What I think we should do, if that ever came up, is we could have representatives from District Three, District One, District Two come and to the county, and we'll either have a work-study session together or some kind of a meeting that could be, well, all meetings have to be public, but then that's fine, and get those together. But maybe we should have representatives to come and focus on the needs that are common to all of the entities of the government.
Kathleen?
I think I would like to approach this as a task force.
All right, speak up.
Okay. I would like to approach this issue as building, creating task forces. So you would have members from all the different cities, maybe on water, on tourism, on economic development, so that we all understand the issues that we're facing, because we're a very diversified district. If you just look at District Two, you've got Tombstone, McNeil, you've got Bisbee, Douglas, Naco, all have very different issues, but many times, these people don't talk to each other. So if we create a task force on specific issues that we know, maybe we start off with the top three or four. Whether it's tourism, I know that Douglas needs a lot of help, they could definitely learn a lot from Bisbee and Tombstone in promoting our town. And we could talk about jobs, how we can bring small manufacturing. Now, we're all on the same page, because I do think we're very disenfranchised. We're in little pockets, doing our own thing, where we could be much better, have better improvement, and do better in actually joining together as a county and promoting our whole county, and coaching in that kind of manner. Thank you.
All right. Mitch? You get to start this one. Are you familiar with multi-use transportation for the county, and is there funding available?
Right now, there's a bus service that goes through Douglas, and goes out to Cochise College, and it goes out to Sierra Vista, and it has a route, and it is subsidized by CIGL, and the Arizona's, what does that stand for? Southern Arizona Government Organization, which I was a representative of that for a few years. But they're kind enough to get the grants as a pass-through and fund that. We could expand the services that we have, the bus services, and go to outlying towns like Tombstone or thereabouts. So I would like to see that expansion.
Kathleen?
Yes, you know, what, I grew up, we had a Greyhound bus, and that was able to take, you know, Douglas is very kind of sometimes isolated where we are. There are a lot of elderly that either their children have passed, unfortunately, or they're completely in separate parts of the county, or the country. And when you're isolated like that, you can't even get to your doctor's appointment, that creates a whole sense of dementia is increased when you're isolated like that. So I think we have to, as a county, bring some Greyhound bus, the Grey Lines. I mean, look, if we can find money to transport people who have been coming over illegally and bring them from you, like in Tucson to Douglas, there's no way that we can't have a vision to create a system within Cochise County where every community is served to go to their doctors in Tucson to be able to visit other people in the community. I mean, it is just unacceptable. So whether it's to grants, whether it's to the government, whether it's to finding different ways to approach this, I think this is one of our top issues, is infrastructure for transportation, not only for commercial, but for the residents of the county.
Thank you. Joni?
Even though we do have that, the bus system that goes from Douglas all the way to Sierra Vista, unfortunately, it's limited to outlying areas like Fruitville. They have no bus service on Saturdays. Naco, I don't believe that they have much service. They use the city bus systems, I know our kids will catch the bus. So I believe it does need to be expanded. It would be nice if we could find grant funding, more grant funding at which to do that. But there is a definite issue with people having transportation, like she said, with the elderly. Many people do not have family, they can transport them to medical appointments, or even to visit relatives elsewhere. So I think we need to look at maybe even working with NGOs, church organizations that can provide transportation. There are, there are some at a cost, but it would be nice to find one that would provide maybe a tier structure for us to be able to develop vouchers so that our elderly and our people that are at the poverty level will have a better opportunity to travel.
Thank you. Okay, now we started a new question, right? With Kathleen. How would you improve the public image of Cochise County?
Well, quite frankly, you know, when I traveled, when I was on the East Coast, I brought multitudes of people from Croatia, from eastern seaboard, to Cochise County, and they were in love with it. People know about Cochise County in Paris. There is this whole kind of image about we're in the Wild West, and we're like OK Corral, and Geronimo, and all this. So the image, I think what we have to do is we have to come together as a county and have a plan. We have to encourage tourism, tourism is kind of our strength. We are very unique in what we offer people to come and visit. Our ruralness, our independence, the open air, the open skies, cattle, cowboys. You know, even our Mexican culture is really, really attractive to people. I think we have a lot to offer, and I think we just have to have a better plan on how we promote it. Look, I went to the Tombstone City address in January, and I was amazed by their marketing, what they do in Europe. They do an incredible job. So I would like Tombstone to be the lead in educating all of us in this county on how better can we market ourselves as a great place to live, as a great place to retire, and as a great place to visit.
Joni?
I believe that Cochise County does have a great marketing with Tombstone and especially Bisbee. We have people that come from all over the world. I have friends that have traveled from Europe, from Australia, because they really love this area. They love the desert, they love the mystique of, oh, it's, it's the great Wild West. I think one of the issues that we have with our image is unfortunately the political backlash, and I think that needs to be addressed. I think we need to tone down the rhetoric, I think we need to leave our personal opinions out of the politics so that we're not making news everywhere across the world. I mean, I've had friends of mine contact me in Europe and kind of joke, wow, you guys are in the news. I don't think that does us well, because we have so much to offer as a community, as a tourist destination. I would like to see whomever is elected for board of supervisors get along and tone down the angry issues and focus on what is best for Cochise County and what is best for the people that live here.
Yeah, actually, I answered the next question that we're going to... Mitch?
Well, I feel that government can't do everything. And so in this portion, you know, the, it has to, it has to fall to the private sector. Now, as far as tourism goes and the advertising, that should be left up to the Chamber of Commerce. We don't have a very strong Chamber of Commerce in Douglas. We used to have, but that ebbs and flows as, as the participants go. But I think what the government could do is, we could support the private sector to get their, their organizations together. Now, that's where it has to be, we can have a, maybe a cooperative between the private and the public. But government, I don't believe government can do everything, and so I want an eye on, on more of the private sector.
Kathleen?
Let me guess.
Kathleen, no, we'll be, we'll be coming back to you, because, Joni, the question is, how would you improve the public image of Cochise County government?
By one, trying to get along. Again, when you're in government and you're serving office, you're not there to push your, your own personal agenda. You're there to solve the issues of your either town, or in this case, your county. You need to learn how to work together, it doesn't mean you have to get along, but you do have to have professionalism to look at the big picture. What does your county need, what do your constituents need? And how, as a collective body of supervisors, can we work together to get those needs addressed? That is my idea. I mean, I think that we all need to look at what are ways that we can rein ourselves in and have a better focus on the people of Cochise County.
Mitch?
Well, in my experience, I've been on the Douglas City Council so long that I've worked with five mayors, I've worked with seven city managers, six of whom I've hired. I've worked on the school board, two superintendents I've hired, I've been president of the school board. I, I've worked with all of these people, and I think that you continue to work well together, and that might be the key here. You have to work well together and take everybody's opinion, and they should reciprocate by working with you also. And so as far as that goes, I expect that if I were elected, hopefully, that we could carry that through. And based on my experience, I can work with a lot of people. I was a, you know, a planning and zoning for 11 years, and many people would come and go, and, and we all get along. And many of those people that are not on there, I still see in Douglas, and we, we meet at Walmart. So we have all the right talk, and, and we're all friendly, and I think that could carry over.
Kathleen?
You know, when I was getting signatures for running for county supervisor, I was pretty shocked how little people knew what a county supervisor is, or that there was one. So I think one of our things is, one of the things we need to do as board of supervisors is to really market ourselves, what our responsibilities are, which is quite impressive, and to educate people, this is a very important role. And people need to understand on what county supervisors do. I also think that there has to be feedback. Once you, whoever you elect to that office, you as citizens have to be part of the process. You have to give feedback, you have to show up at the meetings, because you can't expect us, once elected, to solve all your problems if we don't hear from you. We're not experts on everything. Some of you are experts on one or two things. So you, I would expect that once that, if I was elected, that's not where the relationship ends. It starts from that, and we have to have you, the citizens, involved in every way that we can. So it's very important that we can get our message out to you, that you, our website, the website for the county is easy to go through, to be able to find out information, and again, I would say to you, whoever you elect, make sure you're part of the process. Thank you.
Mitch, you're going to start with this one. How do we bring the broadband internet service to everyone in District 2?
Well, first of all, there's another private entity question. Cox has sprung fiber optic into Douglas. They, it's, I believe it's at the schools, we have the Series E rate for internet at the schools. I know it goes down to the Copper Queen Clinic, and so we can expand that, but that's a private business. And again, government should be supporting these entities, but I don't believe that it's the role of government to provide every, every service.
Kathleen?
Okay, I'm glad you brought this up. I was just reading on the website, county website, that about the connectivity issue, 60% of Cochise County households have access to broadband speeds of 100 MPDs, download 20 MPDs, upload or higher. 11% of Cochise County households are underserved. 29% of Cochise County households are unserved. So we're talking 40% of the households in Cochise County do not have reliable access to internet. This affects everything. You can't bring in the private sector if you don't have connectivity for them to be able to connect outside of Cochise County. Education is greatly affected. You can't take courses online. And if you want to come to Cochise County because you love it, but you want to work remotely, which is the thing now, well, guess what, 40% of people don't have that ability, how are you going to be able to promote us, our county as a doable place to come and open a business? And let's talk about healthcare. Unfortunately, telemedicine is the future of these rural communities. We can't get doctors and their families to come down here. Telemedicine is going to be how we're connecting with our healthcare. And if we don't have connectivity, what does that say? The Cochise County's got to come up with a plan, we get private sector, we get anybody we can, because this is a really, really critical issue.
Joni?
Although it may not seem like it's a government issue, the government can help private entities, or they can also help pursue grants that are possibly out there. Internet is a very important thing in education, it's an important thing for businesses. Like, it's been previously stated, many people are working remotely. And unfortunately, right now, we have very lackluster internet in this area. As I've been driving around the county, I noticed that I hit dead zones, where I have no cell phone service, I have no service whatsoever. So what are these people doing? Again, emergency services, you need reliable internet services for tele, tele net help. Again, that's, that is becoming one of the big things for rural people. They can't drive 100 miles to go see a doctor, so tele net solves that problem. If we don't have a reliable internet service, then we have issues, and we need to actively pursue grants. We need to look at maybe finding programs that we can provide hotspots. There are little things that people can check out at the library, and it affords you the opportunity to have internet in your home. But I think it's a very important thing that we really need to look at and try to find funding for.
Okay. You started your part. Got it?
Did I?
Did I?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure that you... Okay. Kathleen? Do you believe the county's voting system is secure?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that question.
Do you believe the county's voting system is secure?
Yes, I do. I mean, now, if you ask me about voter fraud, I would say that I've witnessed it in Douglas, so I'm always concerned about that. As far as I gather, when we're coming, the big question is election integrity, right? You know, I, I really try, I wasn't privy to all the details of what happened with Judd and Crosby. I do know that they were given a letter by Governor Ducey saying that they had the authority to, to do a hand count. Crosby and Judd were both pressured by close to 30% of their constituents that they wanted to have a hand count. And the Arizona statute, when I read it, is very, very dubious. I mean, it can be interpreted either way by lawyers, for who, and it, so what it comes down to is who's in power is who is going to give you the authority. I don't think that that's a good system. I think both parties need to stop, because the language is so unclear. The legislature needs to figure out what they're going to do. Are they going to give the board of supervisors the authority to look at these kind of issues or not? If they don't want to, then take that power away, but make it very clear so lawyers don't get involved, and they be the ones to decide who has authority, because it is actually who's in power. And let's not forget, both the Democrats and Republicans have used the same thing. 2016, Hillary Clinton said President Trump was illegitimate, it was illegitimate, it was a fake election, it was unfair. Trump did the same thing in 2020. Both parties need to stop, and that's what I have to say.
Joni?
So actually, today I went to the elections office and got to walk through the whole test. And from the point of them turning the machine on, us putting a ballot in, doing mock votes, them downloading, showing us how they download that information on a thumb drive that's taken into another room, and they showed us how they sort the mail and voting. They download the information on those machines on a separate thumb drive. It has all been downloaded on a non-internet-connected computer. No way can it connect to even the computers within the room. So once it was on that, it was stored there, then it's added to another thumb drive, which that thumb drive has been taken to a computer that's hooked up to the internet, and then that is how they send it to the state. So it's kind of a backup. So if something happens between Cochise County and Phoenix, or Maricopa, or wherever it goes, there's always that backup that could not be compromised because there's no internet connection to it. So do I think our elections, yeah, I think it's very safe. I feel that Cochise County has some of the best elections people working for us. They are great at what they do. I feel we lost one of the best people, unfortunately, due to a toxic environment. I think we need to focus on our election department and remember that we have experts in their field, and let them do their job. That's how I feel.
Mitch?
Yeah, the elections are very secure. I've worked with three city, city clerks in Douglas, and I've been through all this logic test many times, because I've run all these campaigns. First time I ran was 1994. So I mean, it's, it's been a secure and steady process, and I know these people also, they are highly professional, there is no question. I don't believe that you can find any unscrupulousness, and, and so I would say that they are very secure, and I, I am positive that the outcomes are perfectly ideal.
Okay, we're going to start with Joni on this one. What do you see as the biggest issue in Cochise County specifically?
The biggest issue in Cochise County? Water. I think water is our biggest issue right now. I mean, there's a multitude, there's probably seven very big issues, but to me, right now, water's a big issue. The lack of regulation is going to be costly if we don't get it figured out. Like was stated before, it was in the newspaper that Wilcox, the city of Wilcox has lost one of their wells. Mitch has mentioned that this possibility of Douglas well, I think he's mentioned it, or Kathleen. Water levels are not forever, and if we do not monitor and put some kind of control on a large massive excreting of water from our table, we're going to have a problem, and it's not going to be able to be recharged. We don't have the rainfall that's needed right now to recharge the amount of water, the millions of gallons of water that are being pumped out right now by the commercial agriculture that's sitting in our valley. So I feel water right now is one of the most important things.
Thank you. Mitch?
Yeah, I, I would agree with the water. There's a couple other things I want to talk about, the economic development and jobs, of course, but the water... of course, but the water situation, there's, there's natural arsenic in soil here and that's what costs the money. I know in Douglas, we're, we've got it filtered down to .003, that's 3.3 hundredths parts per billion in the water to take the arsenic out. Now, that by government rule is going to be good enough to start to recharge. And what we're going, we've got a plan in Douglas that we're going to extend all that recharge effluent out, out to the golf course and the parks. And then we're going to use some of that effluent and start to recharge too. But also remember that there's not a wall between Alapieta and us and it's the same aquifer. So if we do the recharging here, you know, it's going to be good for everybody, but I don't know, it has to be more done with that. Maybe Wilcox can do that if they can put in the money. Maybe all these other towns can do that. But water is an issue, but also economics and development and the jobs, they're going to come, we have to be prepared for it.
Thank you. Kathleen?
You know, as I looked at the issues, I always did feel that the economy and jobs are really important to keep people in Cochise County. The more and more I look into it, water is a serious issue. We should be looking at Rucker, County Rucker Dam, which is now just a trickle of water instead of had it, when I was growing up, it was, it was a huge lake. We should be looking at recharging that. We as a whole county have to pull together because what's going to happen in Wilcox and what's happening to private people who have spent all their money in buying land in that area to see their dry well up, wells dry up and then to not be able to sell their land for anything. I mean, this is going to be very close to happening in Douglas, especially with these big ag farms. I mean, I think maybe we have to base conservation on consumption too. These big ag farms, the pecan farms in McNeil. The other issue is, you know, solar. I mean, although people say that, you know, solar doesn't use a lot of water, they're planning on building a lot of large scale solar farms, which still increase the heat of the land underneath and just creates issues where you can never use that land again. We have a lot of contamination issues. They just had a well that they built at the border station that was contaminated, they can't drink from it. So we have serious issues with contamination and with just the, the water level really sinking low. I mean, now people are looking at having to go down 2,000 feet, that's $60 a foot. Most people can't afford that. The only ones who can are big ag corporations and people like, you know, companies like River View.
Thank you. Well, we're running out of time in questions. So Mitch, if you'll start with the 90-second closing statement.
Well, thank you again for being here and the opportunity to address the voters. As a public service, my interest is to avoid any drama. To follow the law and focus on providing good government for residents and taxpayers and to provide the best possible services for the citizens, for the residents here. From all my experience, I believe that I would be a, a good candidate. I've had executive experience, was vice mayor for, for 10 years, you know, and all those things, and I think we've covered that. But I want to leave you with this. Doctors practice medicine. Lawyers practice the law. Politicians practice politics. I see myself as a public servant. This is a job that I want to get done. So thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen?
Well, thank you to the Legal Women Voters and to Premier Alliance for holding this and to you, the voters, for showing up and the opportunity to speak about my experience, qualifications and vision for the elected office of the Board of Supervisors for District Two. It is critical that we have these debates so voters can make informed decisions. As JFK once said, "The ignorance of one voter in democracy impairs the security of all." I bring a wealth of experience in the business world, having run a small business in New York City. I've worked as a secretary for trade associations, not-for-profit on Wall Street, served as an elected official on the New York City School Board, and founded a startup that encourages voters to vote down the ballot. I've written federal legislation that became law and significantly improved the lives of military families. From a young age, I have been an activist, committed to giving back to my community. You, the voters, elect the Board of Supervisors to represent your interests, to be accountable on to set policy. Throughout my career, I have successfully built bridges between different stakeholders. I am committed to working for growth and prosperity in Cochise County. When I was growing up, we were called the Pinto Democrats and that was because we changed our spots, meaning we never voted down the party line, we voted for the person. I encourage you to do your research, look into all of us, and also go on to kivy.io, put in your zip code, you'll be able to know everyone you can vote for, from the president down to your school board. Thank you.
Thank you. Joni?
You may ask why I'm running for public office. My mother was in public service and taught me it was important to get back to my community. So I choose to follow my mother's legacy. I'm willing to educate myself on county and state issues before making decisions. I'm willing to listen to the many professionals who work for the county and were hired because of their expertise in the area. I realize I have the power except for my citizen member of a board making decisions in public. I am one of a group of votes and my vote does not carry any more weight than the other board members. Therefore, it's imperative that we work as a collective for what's best for our county. Cochise County is my home and I will strive to work with the other supervisors to oversee the county to the best of our abilities. This entails not so much to change the workings of the county, but to look for ways to streamline and improve efficiency. I would like people to think of Cochise County as a place where great things are happening, not as a place of dysfunctional politics. I would like to thank all of you for your questions and for coming out tonight and I would appreciate your vote July 30th. Thank you.
Thank you. The Legal Women Voters of greater Tucson are pleased to assist the Premier Alliance in presenting tonight's form. The League is an all-on-year organization that's committed to educating and assisting the public in a nonpartisan way to understand issues and candidates. I want to thank you all for being a wonderful audience. You were great. A wonderful candidates for a very good job.